Okay, everybody, I want to call the meeting to order at the town hall meeting. And I want to welcome everybody tonight. And I think we'll start the opening remarks from Pastor Curtis Smith from St. James Missionary Baptist Church. Pastor Smith, would you like to come up? And we sure thank you for letting us be here tonight.
Sure, sure, sure. Thank you. Let me just say what a privilege it is. Oh, get a microphone.
Just that.
All right. Let me just say what a privilege it is to have you all come and be in our presence tonight. We know that because of your presence here that we're going to truly be blessed. And we thank God for the opportunity to be able to host this meeting on tonight. Just so that you know, just kind of give you a little background about our church. We've been in existence since 1865, right after the Emancipation Proclamation. And a freed slave by the name of Squire Joe Hegan, he started St. James Church on a land grant by a former slave owner. And so we have been in existence for 146 years, serving the community of Fayetteville, Arkansas. And I want you to know that we are a very proud church, very loving church, very kind and generous church, certainly committed to the community. And so by having this meeting here, I think this really kind of put a little chocolate on top of the ice cream to be able to invite you all here and to be able to see your faces partaking this. So on behalf of St. James Missionary Baptist Church, we certainly thank you and welcome you to be here tonight. And we trust that tonight's meeting is going to be very productive and certainly done in a way that is going to be pleasing and acceptable to not only the city of Fayetteville, but also pleasing to God. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, Pastor Smith. We will start, I will give a little report of some of the things that we've got going on in the city, and then we will have some staff reports, and then we will open it up to the public. Comments, questions? The first thing I wanted, that we've got on the horizon in the city of Fayetteville, of course tomorrow night, we'll be voting on the smoking ordinance at the city of Fayetteville, change of that ordinance. And that's something that will be probably the main focus of the meeting tomorrow night, if I know anything about the meeting. Some other things I wanted to talk about, of course, we, this last, been about a month ago, we had a very devastating flood in the city of Fayetteville, probably 1.3 million dollars worth of damage. I know that there'll be some reports on what you can do and who you can contact through FEMA and things like that, if there's been damage to your homes. I know that there has been a lot of questions, and these are questions that people have asked me on the East Square Building. Seems to be a pretty hot topic around town, what exactly is the position? And I will tell you, the position of the mayor is that he will, is not interested in raising taxes on the people to buy the building. So you know what my position is on that now. So I cannot speak for the city council, but that will be eventually their decision. But that is, my position is the mayor and the staff, being that the staff works for me, you know. We also, we are going to introduce the Emergency Operations Plan. The Chief Dayringer will be doing that tonight, and this is the, a truly an emergency plan that we have developed. When I first came into office, we were hit with a ice storm, if you all remember, three weeks into the, my office. And we had over five million dollars' worth of damage done to the city of Fayetteville, which, of course, when you throw the flood in there, we're looking at over six million, six and a half million dollars worth of damage to the city in the last three years. I seem to be, well, I hope, I hope my luck gets a little better in the next year or two. But anyway, the city's faced a lot of stuff in the last two and a half years. We faced the worst recession since the Depression, the worst probably flood we've seen in 25 years, the worst ice storm, the largest snow on the coldest day. But other than that, I think things have gone well. What else did I leave out? I think somebody said goodness sakes. Well, but, but we have pulled through it, and I think the city's stronger. We actually, in our budget and things like that, we actually cut 2.6 million dollars out of the budget last year and still kept the city afloat. And we didn't reduce our services, and we kept everybody their jobs. So that was quite an accomplishment. I want to compliment, I think I had the, I think I had the finest staff, I think I have the finest city council in the state of Arkansas. And so I have to compliment them on those, all those achievements. Also, we are looking at, on the trails, the Green Lake Trail, that is going to start on the south end of town and go all the way through Bella Vista. And about 34 miles of a regional trail, which is, is very, is going to be a very great addition to this city. I can't think of anything, but I'm sure that there will be some questions later on. But for the most part, our sales tax looks much better than it did last year. This time last year, we were looking at possible furlough days for staff and possibly even cutting city services, but we have managed through the efforts of the staff, and the sales tax has improved. It looks much better this year than it did last year. We are cautiously optimistic, I think is my finest, he will give you his report, we always start him off, with, with the reports and stuff usually. Tonight, I would like to start with, with Chief Dayringer, and then we will just go down the line, we'll finish up with Connie, and introduce yourself, what you do around here, and then why you're here.
Hello, everyone. My name's Dave Dayringer. I'm your new fire chief. I say, you know, I've been here for a year and a half now, so my excuse of being the new kid on the block is about to wear out its welcome, so I guess I'm going to have to start getting productive. We have a, the mayor's asked me to give you all a brief summary of our action, after-action report from our deployment to Joplin. So I'm going to start out with that, and then I'll give you a brief overview of the On Sunday, May 22nd, in the evening, about 5:45, Joplin was hit by an F-5 tornado. It did extensive damage for a mile wide and six miles long through the heart of the About 7:30 Sunday night, the state of Missouri requested aid from the state of Arkansas through the Emergency Management Assistance Compact. That's a pre-arranged agreement for assistance between states. And then the Arkansas Department of Emergency Management requested the Northwest Arkansas Task Force One be deployed. That's a technical rescue team from Northwest Arkansas that Washington County and Fayetteville and Springdale and Bentonville and fire departments in the area have put together to respond to these types of emergencies in our own jurisdiction and in other jurisdictions. So about 8:00 PM, Washington County contacted Fayetteville Fire Department personnel, requested to staff the Northwest Arkansas Task Force One. The mayor approved eight personnel from the Fayetteville Fire Department to join the 35-member task force that was deployed up to Joplin. Fayetteville Fire Department personnel that were deployed were Assistant Chief Chris Lynch, he's with us here tonight, he can answer your questions about what they encountered there. Battalion Chief Kevin Murray, Captain Braden Flood, Captain Harley Hunt, Captain Kyle Lynn, Driver Operator Randall Coker, Driver Operator Jeremy Jackson, and firefighter Chris Boyd. These men are all trained in technical rescue. The task force, Arkansas Task Force One rallied at Fire Station Number Six a little after 8:00 PM, checked their gear, tools, communication equipment. They gathered information about staging, assessed the damage and weather conditions, and ascertained the command post location in Joplin. The team arrived in Joplin at about 11:00 PM and was, after pausing in their journey for the weather, that was still raging through the area, and was directed to a search and rescue staging area in Joplin at the intersection of Range Line and 20th Street, in a parking lot next to the Academy Sports Store and in front of the Walmart Store. They were staged in the middle of the heaviest affected area of the city. Once at the staging area, the team conducted a head count, established communications, set up lighting and generators. Personnel conducted a final equipment check, they geared up and began planning and documentation. The team incident commander and liaison made contact with Joplin Fire Department's staging officer, who relayed response missions to Northwest Arkansas Task Force One. The task force assembled six response teams, and response missions were allocated after a task assignment was filled out by the planning officer. This chart represents the organization of the command structure within the Task Force One. We have an incident commander, a planning officer, liaison, public information officer, and then rescue operations. Planning team consists of communications and task assignment leader. The rescue teams were made up of six individuals in each team, including rescue team number five had a search dog as part of the team. First, the team searched a three-story apartment building and two subdivisions that were heavily damaged over the next four hours. These searches were mostly secondary searches. They do primary searches to see if there's anyone still alive, which is a quick survey of the buildings or the neighborhoods in this instance. And then a secondary search is more thorough to make sure they haven't missed anyone. And so these were mostly secondary searches, taking more time to search through the debris. Here's a picture of a heavily damaged home, and this truck, if you can see, I don't know if it pointed overwork, but right here is a piece of wood, like a two-by-six, that was put through the side of this door, just straight through the side of the door up into the truck. Then here's another heavily damaged home, the entire blocks were heavily damaged like Here's another one, the, the white, this right here is a big Winnebago, and that's foundation to a home. This is a car. At approximately 3:30 AM, on May 23rd, all six teams returned to the staging area for rehab. At approximately 5:00 AM, no response missions were being allocated to the group, and the staging officer for the city of Joplin was no longer at the staging area. The decision was made to make contact with the city of Joplin's Emergency Operations Center for more response missions. The group was assigned to perform search and rescue operations at the Home Depot store. And during that time span, some of them caught 30 minutes or, tried to catch 30 minutes or an hour of sleep on the, on the pavement of the, or in the vehicles. They had a convoy of aid vehicles that went. And so they were given the assignment to search the Home Depot, and that's what it looked like when they arrived on the scene. So the, the search and rescue operation here was sectioned into two divisions with three teams assigned to each division, and one team working in the midsection of the store. Each team was assigned a safety officer with a rapid intervention team used in each division. Crews encountered extreme collapse conditions with, that hampered their efforts, generating time-consuming tunneling and debris removal and labor-intensive work. Heavy equipment was requested by the incident commander to move shore walls, racks, and other debris. Severe weather hampered the effort, triggering the removal of crews for safety reasons twice during the operation. Work was suspended for approximately 30 minutes, twice, to allow heavy rain and lightning to pass through the area. A representative from Home Depot Corporation was on the scene and worked with the incident commander, which proved helpful when he was needed to answer questions and provide additional tools and marking paint. The staging area officer for the Joplin Fire Department worked with the Home Depot incident commander and Northwest Arkansas Task Force One liaison to provide additional resources for the operation. Staging became a problem with several self-dispatched resources arriving on the scene. It was apparent that the team did not have enough personnel to fill all of the roles it needed, specifically an onsite staging officer. The incident commander and division commanders attempted to fill dual roles to address staging concerns. Volunteers cooked food on the site for all of the emergency workers. Building was constructed with lean-up concrete walls that collapsed into the store on the front side and collapsed out on the rear side of the building. Four fatalities were found in the front area of the store beneath the collapsed concrete walls. The heavy concrete walls posed a tremendous challenge for rescuers and heavy equipment operators. Crews had to tunnel under and shore and crib, using shoring and cribbing to reach human remains. In some cases, the concrete walls had to be broken up and removed in pieces. At approximately noon on the 23rd, two teams of nine personnel from Missouri's Urban Search and Rescue Team, Task Force One, arrived on scene to assist with operations. These teams were used to supplement existing operations and provided specialized equipment, such as cameras, to help search voided areas that were inaccessible. At approximately 1500 hours or 3:00 PM, command officers reevaluated the operation and determined that it was time to request relief crews, prompting a new operational period. Task Force One began demobilization at approximately 5:30 that evening and left the scene with the Joplin Fire Department. Task Force One returned to Fayetteville at 7:30 that evening. In summary, a debriefing was held at Fire Station One on the 24th for the personnel that responded to the incident. And Northwest Arkansas Task Force One performed well, and they gained good experience that they can bring to bear if this sort of disaster ever happens here in our jurisdiction. And I'm going to leave you with this picture, which is a before-and-after picture of the path of the tornado over Joplin. You can see the brown area on the picture on the left, this is where the tornado moved through. And this is what it looked like prior to the tornado moving through. Anyway, that's the after-action report from the group. They went up there, they did a good job, they assisted in making order out of the chaos, and that's what you have to do so many times in those instances. So with that, in Fayetteville, we have a new Emergency Operations Plan that will help us with this type of incident here, and we are distributing it this week. And it has a basic plan. It's been adopted, it's been approved by the mayor, adopted by the council, and distributed amongst the department heads and division heads of the city, who all contributed to their portion of the Emergency Operations Plan. It's flexible in the appendices, it's very detailed if needed, so that we can adapt it to any type of emergency that may occur here in Fayetteville. It's got a, like I said, the basic plan, it sets up roles and responsibilities down at the Emergency Operations Center and for each city department. It goes hand-in-hand with the emergency, citizens' emergency procedures, which can be found on Access Fayetteville, which is a checklist of things to look out for, watch out for, beware of, prepare for, any type of emergency that's listed there. So we're glad to have this completed, and we're looking forward to exercising our plan so that we can drill with the intricacies of it and see how it's really going to work when we all try to work together when some disaster happens to us here. So mayor, that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Paul?
Good evening. What I'd like to talk about, my name is Paul Becker, by the way, I am the Chief Financial Officer for the city of Fayetteville. What I'm going to talk a little bit about is budgeting, and how our budget's been moving the last couple of years, exactly where we are right now. As the mayor alluded to before, in the last two years, we have reduced the general fund budget. And I talk basically about the general fund budget because that is the budget that supplies the financing for the basic governmental services. And when I say that, I mean police, fire, people in parks, the courts, the city clerk's office, the support groups such as IT, accounting, finance, things of that nature. And a lot of these areas supply services directly to the citizens, it's very labor-intensive. But this, this is the one part of the budget that is most flexible or most variable. The biggest revenue source that funds the general fund, and the general fund budget that was adopted this year is 33.8 million dollars. The biggest revenue generator of that is sales tax, and that's why you'll see me quoted and see me talking quite often about sales taxes. These sales taxes are sales taxes generated in the city of Fayetteville and part of the county tax, which comes back to the city based on what our population is in relation to the rest of the county. At this time last year, I was reporting to everybody that we were down from budget estimates about one million dollars, we were one million dollars below budget. At that point in time, under the mayor's direction, the staff came up, talked to the mayor, and the mayor decided on a plan. That plan was to reduce expenditures in the general fund by approximately a million dollars, which we felt the loss would be by the end of the year. Key to that plan is holding open 23 vacant positions. So what we have been doing as, as we have been operating and people have been leaving, through attrition, we are holding open positions. That was central to the plan. Also, none of the city employees received a raise last year. As a matter of fact, normal raises haven't been given for almost two years. We're actually going on the two-and-a-half-year mark at this point in time. I'm happy to report that this year, however, sales taxes look like they're up. They've been up for two months, and they've been up for two of our critical months, the months of December and March, which are very large revenue generators here to the city of Fayetteville. They're up about 3.5% compared to the budget, and the budget was reduced based on what was taking place last year. Also up are HMR taxes, which are doing very well, and actually, we have some building permits, building permitting is up a bit. Part of that is due to the school and school expansion. Sales taxes are up even though, based on the census, you remember I said, based on the census, we get a percentage back from the county sales tax. Based on the census, that proportion and that ratio that's coming back to the city of Fayetteville is about 0.6% less than it was last year. Even so, we are up for the year compared to budget in county sales tax. So the message I have for you is that as far as the revenue is concerned, it looks like we are doing better, looks like things are getting a bit better for us, but it still hasn't completely stabilized. We had two months up, two months down. There's still a lot of volatility out there. But the budget that we have adopted, the budget to give the citizens what they deserve, which are basic, basic services that you're all accustomed to, we can provide those services based on the revenue, revenue that's coming into the city at this point in time. If we equate out to the end of the year, we'd be up about a million dollars in the general fund. Now to put this in perspective, this year, we're relying on $449,000 worth of surplus to fund the budget alone. You can't do that forever. So based on this, if we continue this year, we won't have to go into reserves for the budget next year, and that's good news. We get a little bump up, we can completely be on a revenue-to-expense neutral budget. In other words, we won't have any type of deficit financing, and that's the goal that, of course, we all have. The mayor has always set two goals for budget adoption and for financial control of the city. Number one is to continue to provide the same level of services to the citizens. Number two, to protect jobs wherever possible for employees. We have to do that to continue to deliver the services. Again, we've done that by through attrition, we have held back, we've asked employees to do more with less, and our employees have responded very, very well to that. Last year, we were actually over $2 million under in expenditures, about 2.6 under expenditures in the general fund from what we had budgeted. That was an excellent job, an excellent job of expense control by our department heads and our employees on every level. Based on that, the mayor recommended a bonus, a recognition for the services provided by the employees in this expense control. That was $500 apiece. So our employees got $500 apiece, and remember, they haven't had raises for approximately two years up until that point. So that's what the, what the mayor went forward. That cost about 0.4 million dollars, but we still saved about $2 million compared to budget. That has been taken out of the budget and factored in this year. Our budget in 2009 was 35.8 million dollars, it's 33.8 million right now. So that's what we've been doing since the decline in revenue from 2008, I think, under the mayor's direction, and with the support of the city council, we've been responsible, we've been conservative. At this point, I'm fully confident that this year, we'll meet budget, we can continue to provide the services that you all expect and deserve. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Terry Gully?
Yeah, I'm Terry Gully, I'm the Transportation Services Director, and I'm going to give you a kind of little quick update of the, kind of what we went through from the results of all the flooding at the end of April, and then again, our last little episode also. We pretty much went full-time around the clock for about four days there, trying to just recover. The first couple of days, we were trying to keep the water out of homes as much as we could. And then the next three weeks, we spent trying to recover all the debris from all the storm drainage, all the creeks that we could get to, where, anywhere that, our bridges had been jammed up with debris, a lot of culverts. We had three places where the asphalt completely washed off the road, two over Maron Bridges, one down on South Garland, and one at Azalea Terrace, completely washed, a pretty good section away under the, on Porter Street underneath 540 also. The water completely lifted the asphalt and removed it from the surface. And we had one area up on Mount Sequoia where it actually sunk about three feet inside the slide off the side of the road up on Rogers Drive. But that's just kind of some of the major things. What we proposed last week at the council meeting was to put, put together a program to try and address all the immediate service requests that we've been getting. Normally, we have somewhere maybe in the neighborhood of 40, 45, something like that, of open service requests where citizens like yourself have called in and asked us to help them anywhere from cleaning a culvert that might be stopped up with gravel to, to any other type of thing like that, you know, the road caving off due to being undercut along the side of the road. Currently, right now, we've got somewhere between 140 and 160 of those open service requests. And we went through and put them in a list, and yeah, the problem's what, we estimated the time to fix them all, and we came up with 278 days for a one-man crew, or a one crew of five people. And there's 220-some working days in the year, so that's over a year. So we looked at that and decided that we felt like that couldn't go on for over a year till we get to that last person, and that doesn't take into account the current ones that would be coming in for other issues. So we proposed to suspend some operations from some of our programs, mainly the overlay, street overlay program, the sidewalk construction program, and the trails program. Some are, all of those are going to give up some people, and then we needed to come up with about, the estimate to fix all that was somewhere in the neighborhood of between 250 and $300,000 to provide all the materials necessary to, to get things back, anywhere from collapsed pipe to new curb and gutter that actually would help improve drainage, a number of things like that, a lot of gravel and other, other supplies. And with these three additional crews, what we're hoping to do is cut that down to a 90-day period, but about 65 working days. And with that, we're going to- And with that, we're going to propose that, we presented that to council last week as an informational item. We're going back on the 21st of June to get their okay on moving $100,000 from each of those three programs to appropriate the $300,000, and then their final permission to move those crews from those programs to address those problems. So that's a little bit of what our plan is in the short term. In the long term, we're looking at possibly next year, looking at realigning some of the CIP programs to generate more funding to address more major flooding issues in certain parts of town. There's 10 to 20 of those that need addressed from various problems of, and we're looking at those based on the high need or the ones where water is getting in residences and doing property damage. That's kind of an overview of what we've got going on in drainage.
Great.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, I'm Chris Brown, city engineer. I'm gonna have my able assistant, Chief Dayringer, bring up a few slides here. The first one is a slide of all of our construction projects that either are under construction now or will be over the next couple of years. Starting here at Martin Luther King and I-540, that is under construction. That's a state highway project. It's not really a bond program project, but it is a project that affects traffic here in the city. Next, we have Cato Springs Road, which will be in front of the city council Tuesday night for approval, and then we'll be moving forward to construction. We have the contractor ready to go. Following that, this is the roundabout project in front of the hospital. That one, hopefully, in the next three to four months should be under construction. The crossover road project, there's actually two projects that the highway department will be working on between Mission and Joyce Boulevard, and then another project that's, that one will be this summer, and then Joyce Boulevard north to the city limits sometime in 2012 will begin construction. We have a couple of other state projects, Huntsville Road, Highway 16, and a piece of 15th Street, and then Garland Avenue here in the neighborhood. Both of those are probably springtime, next-year projects. And finally, we have the Flyover Project, which is off of 71B in the Northwest Arkansas Mall area. That one will be sometime in 2012, should be under construction. The point of all this is to show that many of the areas into and out of town will be under construction over the next couple of years. It's somewhat of an unfortunate coincidence that all of these projects have been, gotten ready at the same time. They all move at their own pace. We started the bond program in 2006, so some of these have just have taken close to five years, over five years in some cases, to be under construction. This is really one of the reasons, not just the flooding issues, but another reason why we're looking at more of a focus on drainage for next year, because we do have all of these street projects under construction. It seems an appropriate time to maybe take a break from paving operations of city streets while all these major construction projects are moving forward. Talk a little bit about trails, and for those of y'all who don't know, the engineering division, the trails coordinator is housed in the engineering division, so he handles all the design, easement acquisition, all the things that are needed to get trails ready for construction. Then we have an in-house crew in the transportation division that does the trail construction. They hand it over to the parks department, and they maintain, take care of all the mowing and all that sort of thing. This shows some of our trails projects that are either under construction or will be in the coming months. All of the purple projects, of course, Oak Ridge Trail near the university is essentially done. It's wrapping up. The U of A Farm Trail, I've got a slide that shows a little more detail of that. That connects the Skull Creek Trail and the Porter Road area, so it's an east-west connection. The Frisco Trail, this is one of the projects that the mayor mentioned, the Razorback Greenway. That's actually on the Razorback Greenway, as is the Skull Creek Trail, which is the existing trail. And then last, the Clear Creek Trail, which also is a connection for the Razorback Greenway. The last two, the Frisco Trail and the Clear Creek Trail, because they are on the Greenway, we do expect to receive some, not the federal funding that you might have heard about, but because of the federal funding that's going to the Greenway, the Walton Family Foundation is looking at helping us pay for these and, in many cases, paying for the majority of, if not all, of the project. We're still working through all the details of that and have to make formal applications and so forth, but that's the sense that we've heard from the Walton Family Foundation. This is the U of A Farm Trail. It is under construction right now. This is the very north end, or very south end of the U of A Farm, Chestnut Apartments in this area. This is the Skull Creek Trail. It goes west to Garland. This is the Agri Park. Through the north side of, just north of the Pauline Walker Pavilion, down through, this is the fairgrounds, the extra parking for the fairgrounds, then along 540 to the Porter Road exit and under the Porter Road exit. So it'll tie into the Malcomford Road, which is recently completed with bike lanes and sidewalks. We'll eventually have another connection on down to the Hamstring Creek Trail. Again, this project is under construction. It's probably a 12- to 14-month project, so sometime around this year, or this time next year, we should see that trail open for business. Lastly, this is the Razorback Regional Greenway. This is the south end. This is 15th Street. All the way up through, and much of this is constructed already by the city. This is the Clear Creek piece, and then it goes on up through Springdale, Rogers, Bentonville, and Bell Vista. So very, very nice project, $15 million of federal money, and again, the Walton Family Foundation is essentially matching that plus more. So it's a very exciting project. It's one that planners put together and hope we may have it done within 10 years. It looks like we're gonna beat that by about half, so it's looking very, very promising. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chris. Connie?
Good evening. I'm Connie Edgerton. I'm the director of Fayetteville Parks and Recreation. It is my job to help you to have fun in our city. So it's a hard job on some of y'all, and we really want to add to your positive life. But we would like to thank the St. James Baptist Church. Reverend Smith, I'd like to give you a bow. We have a lot of fun and free things for you to do. We have over 70, we have 70 parks for you to visit, which comprises over 3,400 acres. So we have lots of places for you to go this summer, so when you are looking at a place to go that is free and that will help you be healthy and to enjoy the environment, please look us up on our website, and you'll find those items. We do have the Golding Park Concert Series. Oops, no, not that. Which, how many of y'all have been to Golding Park? How many have been to it for many years, like for 15 years? Do we have a 15-year? There we go. Good catch. This is, we are celebrating our 15th year. Thank you all for supporting it. It is your tax money that does support the Golding Park Concert Series. This year, we believe we have the strongest lineup of concerts for you. We've already had one, and whoops, and we're ready to start our second one, which will be this Thursday. We have a local gal, Tiffany Christopher, that will be coming in, and she's very, very good. Come, bring your seat, bring a blanket, and you can bring a basket of food if you so desire, or we do have vendors out there that are our sponsors that you can purchase food from, from 7:00 until 9:00. Later on this summer, we have a guy named Waylon Parris who's coming in on June the 23rd. He's from Fort Worth, Texas. He has a real nice, deep, southern country voice, so for those who like country western, that's the concert to come to. We're really fortunate to have him. His wife actually was a Fayetteville native. She grew up here, and they moved off to Texas when she was in sixth grade, but that kind of got us in the door to get him here. He's very good, too, but we've got some other people that are great, too. I do have some brochures at the very back when you leave, if you would like to have some, or have one to hang in your kitchen or to put up at your place of work. You're more than welcome to take any of those back there. In addition, our swimming pool, Wilson Park Swimming Pool opens, and I seen a young one in here earlier. I was gonna give her, oh, would she like to have a T-shirt?
Yeah.
Would she mind coming up here and getting it? And I'll talk while she's coming. Yeah. Let's give her a hand. There we go. We like to serve everybody. It doesn't matter what age you are, so. Wilson Park Swimming Pool does open this Friday. At 5:00, we open our doors, and it is free admission on Friday, and come enjoy the pool. We do have some inner tubes you can get, and when it becomes dusk, we're gonna show a diving movie. We'll put a 25-foot screen on top of our poolhouse, and this Friday is Despicable Me. But you can see, whoops, you gotta look fast. We also have Yogi Bear coming.
Well, you get to picture.
Yeah. You can look at those dates. They do coincide kind of with our Golding Park Concert Series. The swimming pool, the hours are basically for the public from 1:00 to 5:00, and then from 7:00 to 8:00. We do have swimming lessons in the morning and also in the evening. Last year, we took through, we had about 600 children that participated in our swimming lessons, so swimming lessons is very important to us, and we do have great lessons there, great instructors there, very proud of our staff. Monday, we are closed every Monday, so don't come on Monday up there in your suit. The pool will be closed. But on Saturdays and Sundays, we're open from 1:00 until 6:00. And we are available for private parties. If you'd like to have a birthday party or some kind of a reunion party or something, contact us and we'll arrange that for you. The city is also in charge of our Yvonne Richardson Community Center. There's a brochure back there for you. We have a program in the summer that we call Summer Fun for Kids, and that's exactly what it is. We'll give these kids an experience during the summertime that they can go swimming, they get a free lunch over at Al Creek School through their school lunch program, and we'll take them to different places, they'll, they get to travel throughout and see Northwest Arkansas a little bit, so it's a lot of fun, and that is a free program. We also have a strong judo program and a wrestling program going on there, so there's a lot happening at Yvonne Richardson Community Center. And I do know we have one board member here, John Colbert. Most of you probably already know him, but we appreciate all of his hard work that he does for us there. We also have some other summer camps that we call Be Active. We want our youth to learn to be active. They go on every two weeks, I mean, every week. There's a new one, there's eight different camps. We'll start out on June 13th with a camp called the Adventure Camp, Outdoor Adventure. And you go to Lake Fayetteville, you'll learn to kayak, to ride a bike, to play disc golf. You get to go to Lewis and Clark, it's kind of a rainy day, and climb the climbing wall there, and you'll go back, you'll learn some environmental things such as tree identifications and animal foot tracks and all. So it's a great program for kids, it's ages 5 to 12, and we just opened an older-age adventure camp for kids that are 12 to 15. We've had a lot of parents calling saying, "I need my kid to get off the couch." But what we have learned, do beware. You might be buying a kayak, and you might be learning to bike, because a lot of these kids have loved it, and it's really neat because they've incorporated that into their parents in wanting to do those activities with their parents. So it provides a great activity for them to enjoy. We also have with our summer camps, one for soccer, one for tennis, one for drama, and Camp Wilson, which is just an old camp. They play a lot of games, do a lot of healthy things, so that's kind of it. We do have volunteer programs. We'd like to get you involved. If you wanted to do something fun for your community and you want to give back to it, we do have an adopt a trail program, an adopt a park truck program, trail tracker program. We're always needing coaches or just anything. Come see us, we'll get you busy. But Parks and Recreation, we're there to serve you, and with all your recreational and park needs, go to accessfayetteville.org, that's our website, and get involved. We do have Facebook, and we're also on Twitter, so let's see what's going on, and that's all I have there.
Okay, so that's the reports tonight. So I want to thank the staff tonight for your reports. I want to recognize a few elected officials here tonight. I see Charlie Collins, Senator Charlie, would you stand up? We recognize tonight, State Representative. I see in the back, Molly Lencies, would you stand up, State Representative? We have Senator Sue Madison here tonight with a suit, stand up. I know this old woman, Rhonda Adams, from Ward 4, somewhere, she's somewhere, yeah, there she is. Did I miss anybody? Okay, well, thank you all for being here tonight. With that, that concludes the reports. Now, what we're gonna do is take some comments, public comments, questions you might have, any questions you might have with the staff, anything that you would say that would be an improvement for us at city government, and so let's open it up. Now, when you step up, introduce yourself to the mic, please, and who would be first? Okay.
My name's Johnny Walker. I'm a born and raised Fayettevian, so I'm like, proud of that for sure. My first comment is towards the trails. In all my 60 years of Fayetteville, I think this, the trail system is one of the best things that's ever happened to the city of Fayetteville. As an avid user, I would, I do see a couple of issues every day as I use the trails. As a, being a biker, a bicyclist, when we come to the intersections of North Street, Poplar Street, there's always kind of an issue with the stopping of the traffic. Traffic is, you know, is required by law to stop for pedestrians. When a biker approaches the intersection, there's somewhat of a state of, a little bit of confusion, and I know that the bikers are supposed to exercise the same thing if they were in automobile. They don't have any right of way. But in my experience is that the traffic, 90, probably 90% of the traffic is stopping for bicyclists. There's that 10% that will make a comment or whatnot. My suggestion would be, to ease the confusion, would be to reduce, reverse the stop signs. Instead of putting the stop signs on the trail for not, they're not for the pedestrian, for the bicyclist, but we put the stop signs on the streets, make the traffic, go ahead and stop for everybody on the trails, whether it be a biker, a walker, a runner, whatever, because I think as, when I do drive by these intersections, of course, I'm looking fore and aft to make sure there's not any type of traffic coming, and I don't distinguish between a biker, a walker, or a runner. I just stop. So that would be one suggestion there on that. And I do, again, I'd like to accolade, the day after the flood, I was able to get on a bike trail, and I pretty much had the whole trail to ride on immediately after the flood. So someone, either in transportation or parks or whatever, got out there and did a great job. One real quick question for transportation. As a landowner on Huntsville Road and Fayetteville As a landowner on Huntsville Road and 15th Street, which is sometimes as cursed as being called Highway 16, whenever I make a call about a drainage problem, which is normally where it's been, immediately when I tell my address, it's like I've said a dirty word when I say Highway 16, because I am immediately, say, "Well, that's not our problem, that's a state problem. You have to call the state." Well, I'm a, I'm a resident of Fayetteville first. To me, I'm a resident of Fayetteville first. That's where I pay my, my property taxes, real estate taxes. And it, uh, when you have to deal with the state, it's, uh, you know, it's a six-weeks, uh, project to try to, to get something done there. As a result, uh, I was flooded twice. Of course, everybody else has flooded twice too. But that would be one suggestion that, uh, just because I'm a, I'm on a state highway, uh, I shouldn't, I shouldn't be held any different than anybody else. Thank you.
Okay, I guess, addressing that, where exactly on 16 are you?
Huntsville Road, 3552 Huntsville and then, uh, 1045 Happy Hollow.
Well, I mean, one of, one of the issues we're trying to do drainage on the state highways is for us to actually go out and like dip a ditch, clean out a ditch, anything like that. I'm required by the Highway Department to get a permit to do that. Now, I mean, if it's, if it's something we can go pull out of a covert or something like that immediately to try and stop it from getting in your house, we'll, we'll try and be there. But, uh, we're somewhat handcuffed a little bit by the, by the Highway Department regulations as far as just going and doing what we want to do on the state highways. So, that, that's kind of where some of that response come from. But, I mean, if you call in, tell us you're flooding, we'll try and do what we can do to alleviate it. We may still, before we can do any type of permanent fix, we would have to go through that permitting process.
Hi, I'm Evelyn Stillwell. Am I supposed to tell where I live? I live in Fayetteville. I think many of us are here because we would like this council to address what we hear the University of Arkansas is planning to do with Old Main Lawn. Is that permissible to bring this up?
I think it would be. I, I don't know if there's any representatives.
We, we've been hearing that, uh, the University of Arkansas is planning to remove all the parking from the portion of Lafayette that's closest to the university and cut a road through the Old Main Lawn to renovate, use it for bringing trucks in and out to renovate some buildings. We don't know what we can do, but we'd like to prevent that from happening. We think that's, uh, a very special place that shouldn't be destroyed in that way. They say it's for two years. Um, we're a little bit concerned that, uh, this would ruin a beautiful avenue that was paid for by Will Rogers many years ago. And so, I hope that this group can address that and kind of get the University of Arkansas to lay off.
Well, I don't have a lot of control over the state. I know that, uh, that, that the parking issue would be something that, that would be a city decision. And they, uh, you know, we're, we're looking at, I know Chris Brown is looking at the structure of the bridge right now and he might address that. Uh, I think there's representatives from the university here tonight. I don't know if they want to address any of that or not. But it's my understanding that, that from the Old Main Lawn on, that that's, that's certainly not city jurisdiction, so I don't know. Okay. Which one would like to, Paula, come on up.
I'm Paula Marinani. I live right off the front lawn of Old Main. And I led the effort to save Cardinal Hall on the University of Arkansas campus, eight years of that. The reason I spent so much time on that is because that whole area up there is very special. It is not just special to the university, it's the citizens of Fayetteville that brought the university here over Little Rock wanting it so bad back in 1871. It was the citizens that rallied and did that. And that university is part of the city of Fayetteville too. We should have some say as to what happens to that beautiful front lawn of Old Main. And Old Main, which is our most outstanding visual resource that we have in Fayetteville, it is the most outstanding and most readily recognizable resource in the whole state of Arkansas. And for them to be able to do something like that without any input from citizens is wrong. And I pointed out at the street committee meeting the other night, most of you weren't there and many here weren't there, there are ways that the city can influence this in that they want to approach up Lafayette Street through residences, so it will disturb and abuse the residents that live on that street. They want to take the parking off of the street from West Street up to Arkansas Avenue. And in the Dixon Street paid parking thing, that's our residential parking, that whole half. And now, that would be taken away. Damage to our only historic boulevard, Arkansas Avenue, and there's been discussion, well, who has control over Arkansas Avenue? As a citizen, it doesn't really matter to me. It is that that is a beautiful resource for the city of Fayetteville. And in all the years of discussion of wanting boulevards and stuff, that is one that we've had and there will be damage to it if they come in that way. Another big thing is that right now, from West Street to Arkansas Avenue, there are no truck signs up. No trucks are supposed to be going through there unless they are, um, service, like trash trucks, or delivery, like UPS, or maybe somebody's moving out. The trucks have been there for as long as I've been back, 15 years. Also, the wear and tear on the already challenged Lafayette Street Bridge. It is at least 10 years past due for restoration. And, and in the discussion, it was brought up that it has recently been tested for the load-bearing weight. And I pointed out, it is not just the weight of a truck, it is the unusual and excessive abuse over the two-year period of time. I estimated that, the other night, I said, "What if there was five trucks a day?" And they said, "Well, we won't be going on Saturday and Sunday." Well, I imagine they will be, but let's just say 10 trucks a day, times two in and out, times five, five days a week, times 52 weeks in a year, times two, that is 10,400 heavy construction truck, cement truck trips across that bridge. And it was not built for that, it hasn't been used for that. And, um, a analysis of that, in excess of what there would normally be, like bringing in historic preservation people, should be done. And lastly, uh, I want to just reiterate that coming in off the front lawn, I've heard some crazy stuff over the years. I thought tearing down Cardinal Hall was bad. I've never heard anything this crazy. This is, this is absolutely unbelievable. That is our work of art and it's like throwing mud all over it. Leaving it there for two years for everybody to see, this is your, this is your beautiful source of pride. Look what we've done to it. And then to tell people, "We're gonna turn it back good as new." It won't go good as new in our heads. And it'll be an embarrassment in the meantime when people come here and see it. Thank you.
I'm Sue Addison and I have met with the university and they do have a plan to extend Lafayette Street to the west, up into the Old Main Lawn. And I won't comment on my opinions about that plan at this time, but I would like to ask that the city please protect that neighborhood. That Lafayette Street to the east is an historic neighborhood. There are residents there that need your city protection. This plan of the university's will not work without accommodation from the city. So, I would like to ask that the city stand firm, keep the resident parking, and keep the trucks off of that historic street. One more little side item that I'd like to mention is that Representative Robach and I are in the process of setting a date so that we can have a public hearing on this issue to comply with HCR 1024 of 2003.
Okay, who else?
I'm Irene Pritchard and I live at the corner of Lafayette Gregg. And I, I have connections with the university through family. And my great-great-great-grandfather was instrumental Lafayette Gregg and bring it to Fayetteville. I have real problems with having any more onslaught onto our neighborhood. We don't need it as a construction corridor for the university. We've had high-power lines go up. We deal with Dixon Street and, you know, we, we suffer through. But to have our parking taken away and to have rumbling trucks going through at all hours is not what we need for a residential area. It is residential and it's mixed residential. It, all types of people live in the area and we just don't need the noise and we don't need the vibration. I have a 140-year-old rock wall that runs right along Lafayette for half the block. And, um, I don't know what damage could be done to it. So, please, if the city can keep our parking on the street and don't allow them to do curb cuts, they would have a hard time getting up on Old Main Lawn without a curb cut on Arkansas Avenue. So, thank you.
Thank you. Who else?
Good evening. My name is Verda Watson and my husband and I are landowners in Fayetteville. My number one question is when you put the emergency operation plan into effect, will there be an emergency alert alarm that will alert us when there is a tornado or whatever emergency there is? And number two, is there a shelter located in Fayetteville? To my knowledge, there isn't.
I think that's correct. She?
We have, uh, your first question, uh, early warning system. The new technology is to use text messages and have a, uh, National Weather Service radio within your home. The, the sirens that people used to put, or that a lot of communities have had and maintained over the years, is really old technology for when people were, um, outside more, the windows were open, the people could hear what was going on in the air outside of their home around them. These days, we live in air conditioning, a lot of times those sirens will go off and people will not hear those sirens. So, we're trying to move the, the early warning systems inside the home where you can hear the alert radio go off and be warned that there's, uh, bad weather coming our way. Text messaging is, uh, the latest technology for warning citizens in the community as well as alerting, it's replacing the page, old paging system for the fire department notification, police department notifications. So, those, those two technologies are what's gonna be used to replace the, the siren system, which is really old technology. Now, on the shelters, the, we have pre-established shelters for, uh, they're emergency shelters. They're not storm shelters. The modern-day construction is mainly lightweight, it's less expensive, it, uh, is not as protective in some of the large expanses of buildings like we used to, uh, in, used to, people would go to, uh, schools that were built, you know, by the Work Progress Administration. They were solid. They, they built storm shelters for, uh, because they were preparing for war coming out of World War II. Buildings these days are, are not really made to withstand the 475 tornado. So, what we ask people to do is shelter in place. And when, if they are, in the event they're made homeless, then we have pre-established with the Red Cross, some shelters that will be, um, designated and staffed. And people can go to those shelters, which is what we did during the, during the flood that we had recently.
Okay, I was just asking because the small city of Johnson and Prairie Grove do have shelters, so, but you've answered my question. Number two, on Washington Avenue, North Washington Avenue, which we do appreciate, in December, they did an upgrade for the drainage area. But they came along with the asphalt and replaced the asphalt in squares, or however you want to describe it. And it's sinking in areas close to the manholes.
We can, we can look at.
Possibly, maybe a sewer rehab, I don't know. David, do you do anything? I'll check, I'll check it. If it's, if it's a patch or something, we'll look at replacing it.
It's a whole strip, okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome. I see all of them, Sarah Lewis is joining us from Ward Four, nice to have you here.
I'm Don Mar, the mayor's chief of staff. And just in light of that last conversation, I wanted to remind citizens that the city also has a emergency notification, um, signup system. So, if you go to the city's website, accessfayetteville.org, in the emergency procedures, you will see an opportunity to sign up and you will receive text messages or email messages and any kind of weather warnings or shelter openings. There's an option to sign up for multiple things, but it's the emergency weather notifications that you'll want to receive for those notifications. That is in place today.
What are the comments, do we have? Okay.
My name is Tom Kennedy. I, uh, taught at the University of Arkansas for nearly 40 years. I was on the campus the other day, walking my dog in that beautiful green swale in front of Old Main. And having heard the story of, uh, what seems to be the university's plan to cut across that swale like a scar across somebody's face, when I saw a sign there that seemed to me to be, well, ironic to say the least. The sign said, "Please stay off the grass to help us preserve the integral beauty of our campus." I, I only could wonder, I mean, are we gonna leave those signs up? Seems to me that what hasn't been asked here is the fact there are other possibilities. Uh, the university says it cannot use the Maple Street entrance, which is much more convenient to the areas that are being fixed up. There's no question that buildings need to be renovated, but that area has been barred, cut off because they say a donor has made a, I don't know, $900,000, $1 million donation to the university and they don't want to wait for two years to have that done. It seems to me that, um, if the donor has to be put off, if the donor even, uh, withdraws their funds, that this would be, uh, certainly a better result for the university than to, than to present this, this road onto the most beautiful part, the signature part of the campus. And of course, the questions brought up by the residents are, speak most directly to the city. But, um, it seems to me there ought to be some way to put pressure on the university to alter its plan and to come in from some other direction. And so, we can all stay off the grass to preserve the integral beauty of the campus.
Thank you. Who's next? Anything?
Good evening. I love town hall meetings. These are great. Linda Ralston, I live in Ward Three. I wanted to bring up a couple of- Um, I wanted to bring up a couple of things. I'll just kind of dovetail off of the previous comments. After attending the street committee the other night, I really saw the map, and it was as if there was entrance of this renovation coming off of Maple, some items, Peabody, there's a lot of great renovation that will happen, but as I kind of coined it, it was almost like decades of deferred maintenance were just being, coming from all directions, and it's making it a very challenging, and then I think the position on Lafayette is probably the, the most challenging of, uh, and that we have, the no trucks and things that I think the city will, um, back up our, our desire for another route. Hopefully, I, I believe that there will be one that will be found. I know safety is very important to the university and moving forward, and that was emphasized also at the meeting, and, um, it's, it's hard sometimes to rush safety, though. You know, you've got to get things lined up and to do things properly, so I believe that hopefully another and better way will be found on that. I also wanted to open up, because I know we have a few more minutes left, um, there will be an important vote tomorrow night about voting for the, um, no smoking, I guess in the bars and stuff, and I think if I might sum up my feelings on that, I'm someone that's been very focused on healthy things, and I see it definitely can be a health issue, and yet it comes down to actual business rights and whether or not somebody works in that environment or not, and so I personally feel, I hope that, um, this is actually, uh, turned down tomorrow night. So, I don't know if anybody else might want to address that. We do have a few aldermen in attendance, and that will be a big, big one for tomorrow night. So, um, again, I hope, uh, back to the Lafayette, uh, I think Paula's right, she just declared that area is almost being nightmarish as far as what may be setting up for the next two years of traffic and everything, so I, I hope the city, we've got a lot of due diligence to do. Thank you.
Who else?
I'm John L. Colbert. Um, my question is concerning the crosswalks in front of the different schools. I've been heard that the city is responsible for those, and then several of the, uh, crosswalks, especially in front of Washington, has been faded out, and I'd like to know is the city's going to try to repaint those because it's a safety issue for the kids.
Yeah, I mean, the answer to that is yes. Usually what we do is try and do those right prior to the start of the school year so that they're freshest for the longest during the school year period. But we look at all those every ten, shoot for August right before school starts, so they'll be the brightest for the longest. We want them faded the most in July when school's not in session.
The second one, of course, is a little selfish. I'm concerned about the flooding that we get here at St. James, I'm a member here, and it seems as though the water coming off of North Street on the, um, northeast side of the, uh, of the church is a problem. Uh, I don't know if it's because of the curves there, what, uh, I don't know if the city could look at that first.
I got you an answer there.
Okay.
Uh, one, one of the main problems there we've just, just discovered is we've got a thirty-six-inch drainage pipe that actually goes from Levert up above the Old Skull Creek Apartments that cuts across, and, uh, we've recently discovered that's collapsed. So, a lot of that water that would normally be going into the creek on the other side of the road is coming out, and that seems to be coming down through the open area across the road, and that's something we're going to try and address.
The other one, the, we know that the road, uh, right on Porter Road, uh, the street has been damaged. What's the timeframe trying to get those repaired?
Well, I mean, Chris and I have both been working on that. In fact, I was out there at the ten-thirty that night, and what we ended up having to do was remove the asphalt and then put base back in there. We compacted it back in. We've been trying to patch it, but we're also waiting on FEMA to come in and have our kickoff meeting, and, uh, we were in discussion that this morning, that potentially may, may do some type of little slight overlay to smooth that out for now. We've just got to make sure that we completely document that, because that's about a thirty-to-forty-thousand-dollar, uh, reimbursement that we should get from FEMA because it's directly impacted the flood. So, but we are looking at that as trying to improve that in the interim, but it's something we don't want to, uh, take a chance on losing that reimbursement. So, that's why, why that's been-
That's why we waited a little while-
Done the way it's been done.
See how much money we-
I think Don's going to give a little more on that.
Just to update the public, uh, FEMA did notify the city of Fayetteville and Washington County that they would have its kickoff meeting for public assistance on Wednesday at nine AM. And we've been waiting for that notification before the city can begin any work so that we don't lose reimbursement, and since we have about one-point-three million in damages, we want every dollar we can get back, um, so that the citizens aren't having to pay for that out of general fund or capital improvement dollars. The public, uh, private individual assistance programs have already been underway, and there's, uh, information on that on the city's website, so if you had individual property damage and you're not sure if it qualifies, um, please apply on that site, they'll get with you and go through the details. We're going to attempt for that road, John, at Porter Road, to see if we can provide photos and documentation that will allow us to start immediately with that project. Uh, but since they're going to meet with us in two days, we decided it was worth the wait to guarantee repayment.
Uh, Don, I'd, I'd just like to, uh, make everybody clear that what we have done when the event hits, we take care of things that are safety issues immediately. The longer-term projects such as this, it's in our best interest to wait till FEMA's there and identifies it and clears it before we do it so we can get the maximum reimbursement, uh, and it doesn't have to come out of city funding.
Aubrey Shepherd. Uh, I want to agree with the folks that are very unhappy about Old Main Lawn, and, uh, the, what Linda Ralston said about the smoking ordinance is that, uh, there's one concern. What will we, what will the bikers do when they come for the festival? Roger's Rec has been closed because people don't come, because that's the only business I know that allows smoking right now, I don't know about the others, so, but Roger Ketter would, uh, be pretty sad if that happened. That's the only problem with that ordinance, I think. I do want to thank, uh, the mayor and the staff members that worked on the, uh, stream sign ordinance. It's very important, and, uh, and it was a long time coming, and, uh, people got to discuss it a lot, and a lot of public education was done, and one of, two of the things that go with it that the council passed in the last couple of yard, years that, uh, should make it easier for people to, uh, follow that ordinance that maybe don't get enough publicity. The natural yard, um, ordinance, oh, uh, it was a resolution, I believe, mayor, and, uh, that allows people to plant native plants in their yards and, uh, to eliminate mowing by having something pretty growing there instead. And also, the, uh, um, council voted in support of the National Wildlife Federation's urban wildlife certification program, and the city's bought into that, and, uh, I think it's very important, but all those three work together, and thank you so much for, for doing those good things.
Thank you. I've got time for maybe one more comment or question, and then we've got to do a drawing, I believe, and I want to thank a few people tonight, so, anyone else tonight? Okay, with that, I guess we will do a drawing.
Okay, my name is Liz Leslie. I'm in the mayor's office, communication director. This is a print, and tonight, wait, we have this as, uh, to celebrate Fayetteville's , uh, very vibrant creative economy, as well as our many Fayetteville artists. Linda Sheets is the artist, um, of this print. She is a Fayetteville artist located in the Fayetteville Underground, and so we'll now do a free drawing.
Wow, it's me. Six-one, six-six-six-seven. Six-one, six-six-six-seven. Okay. I want to, uh, I want to thank again, I want to thank Pastor Smith of St. James Missionary Church for letting us use this facility tonight. Thank you very much. I want to thank all the staff and their hard work on this and putting this all together tonight. And I want to thank you, the public. I hope that, uh, that you get something out of this. I hope that you like, do you like these meetings? I mean, are they, are they good? We'll continue to have these, so, anyway, I want to thank everybody, all the elected officials that was here tonight, and, uh, and all the staff and friends and all the crew for doing all this filming, so y'all have a, have a great evening, and I'll see you in about three months. Thank you.